Kate, how are you?
Hey, I'm good. How are you?
Awesome.
You survived the new year?
Basically, I'm trying to avoid being nice.
So, I have a thought about you guys. So, here. Here, I'll show you.
Not comfortable, I don't, you know.
No, I don't.
I'm comfortable with my presence here, I just wanted to be outside.
So, right there, I mean, I was trying to tell you guys that.
Okay, we just moved on here.
It's like a map, and you can see there.
Yeah, we don't.
So, I, if you want to go over, I wasn't planning to do it more that way.
Oh, yeah, no, I got you, you have a gauze, I just, my own comfort, not all that.
Thank you.
If you guys just moved down, I mean, down to this corner.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. You weren't even in it before.
I don't seem like a shy person, but I can be.
Do I go here?
Six thirty, so I will call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. This is a special meeting of the Cedarburg School Board, and is a public meeting. Prime notice that cabinet placed in the district, and additional copies recorded to the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Would you please rise and join me for a moment? So, welcome to the, I believe, first ever listening session of the board that a super school district has ever done. It was public notice as a meeting where any district staff member, district resident, parent of a district student, or district or student enrolled in the district is welcome to attend and speak. Purpose is to provide venue for to hear from our constituents. Just a couple ground rules, it is limited to two minutes. We hope everyone will be able to get to speak. And it is things that are under the legal jurisdiction of the board, so I would just caution anybody who wants to get up and make this a political election type thing, because the board has a jurisdiction on elections that is purely up to the electorate, so this would not be the place for that kind of conversation. So, we have about ten people signed up, if ten people did sign up. We will start with those to try to get everyone a chance and use proper use of our time. There's two microphones up there instead of one, so we didn't number them, so I guess the one on our left or our right is number one, and this will be number two over here. And I'll just say the names and mic one and two, and then who is on deck for each of those, so that we don't have a lot of wasted time between it. Waste your time. That works here at one.
I'm good, thank you.
So, I have Matt McManus on number one, Suzie McManus on number two, and I have Hanny Malek on deck for number one, and, I'm sorry, I don't like to pronounce this name right, DeCinnis Villanilla on number two on deck. And, Matt, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Matt McManus, hello at N30W6863, Cedarburg. And first, I want to say thank you for hosting this listening session. Before I address my main issue, I wanted to say that I was upset to see that the board has tried to intimidate us by threatening we're not immune from liability, can be held liable for defamation and false claims of the session. I'm not sure whose idea that was, but I think you should all be ashamed actually of that statement to your constituents. I worry that this tactic will actually deter people from speaking their minds. The issue I'd like to address tonight is the district's expenditures on legal services. I'm specifically concerned about the litigation the district has initiated, because the state DPI found that CSD did not follow its policies or conduct a reasonable investigation into a complaint that a racially hostile environment exists in the district. I'm not here to discuss the substance of that complaint, but I do believe the taxpayer money that the district is spending on this complaint is wasteful, and the results thus far are embarrassing. The only beneficiary appears to be the various attorneys from the law firm who have been advising CSD on this matter. An attorney from this firm was hired to conduct the investigation that the state deemed inadequate, and now other attorneys from the same firm are collecting more fees from us during the litigation to debate whether their initial investigation was sufficient. To top it all off, the district has issued a press release, and since the email on November 18th reacting to the judge's unfavorable decision on a motion hearing in this case, both messages were uncalled for, and themselves can be viewed as a hostile act or mischievous. I can't tell if it's a law firm who's devising this strategy, or if the district is setting the strategy, but either way, it's not working. I'd urge you to relook at your strategy in this case and your dealing with legal advisors, because right now, you're spending a lot of money to embarrass the district. Thank you.
Susan, okay.
Hi, my name is Suzie McManus, hello at N30W6863, Cedarburg. Thank you for pulling this public listening session tonight. Unfortunately, it does not compensate for the fact that you have severely limited public comment at school board meetings for the past seven months. I am also extremely disappointed that the public noticed for this listening session tonight said that speakers are not immune from liability and can be held liable for defamation and false claims. I hope that your actions have not created a chilling effect on our first member right to speaker tonight. As a parent of two children in the school district, I strive to reach CSD to apply for the completely free COVID testing that is available through the Wisconsin DHS. In case you don't know how this testing works, it is voluntary testing that would be available for staff, students, and immediate family members who want to get tested. Right now, it is extremely difficult to schedule rapid or PCR tests in the community. I contacted Mr. Pnack in October about applying for the free testing, and he told me that he would rather allocate district resources to other needy areas. After he relayed that information to me, I volunteered to help apply for the free testing for the district, and the offer still stands. Accepting the free testing will help identify positive COVID cases right away, thereby reducing our district's high COVID numbers. To date this year, CSD has had 291 positive COVID cases. Last year, for the entire year, there were only 246 positive cases. We are not even halfway through the school year, and our district is on track to more than double the positive cases from last year. Ignoring our high COVID numbers and the highly contagious Omicron variant is not going to make the problem go away. All of our neighboring school districts have accepted this free testing. I encourage the district to follow the Port Washington Sockville School District and do what they did this year. Their testing involves a combination rapid test and PCR test to determine if a student or employee needs to be removed immediately from class. If the rapid test is negative, the person may return to class until the PCR result comes back. I see no downside to this testing, and applying for it could be the first step in restoring the trust that you have lost from parents this school year. Thank you.
Elizabeth Charlotte, you'll be on deck at number one, and Jordan Beck at number two. Mr. Malek?
Good evening. I'm Hanny Malek. I have a question. I'm not sure if you're able to answer tonight, or if you guys could get your heads together and maybe respond formally after. But, in my last two years.
W65.
Oh, sorry, W65 and 727, St. John's, Cedarburg. In business, the last two years for me, like most people, it's been the most challenging part of my career, having to deal with a lot of new things that none of us have ever tackled. I imagine same for you. If you could answer something that you are most proud of over the last couple of years, twenty-four months, twelve months, that you did or didn't do that you're very proud of as a school board that you did, that would be great. The other question, part two to that, is, is there anything that you'd like to have to do over? Just like, in business, we often find ourselves, oh man, I wish I would have done something differently, love to have a do-over on it. Is there anything that the school board wishes they had to do over on? So, is that something that can be addressed tonight? Is that something that you guys can respond to collectively?
Something the board can look at. Our legal system, just to be careful that we could ask clarifying questions, but to be careful how far into discussion we get on individual issues, so that it does not look as if we were answering someone's questions, but not someone else's. So, we're kind of cautioned to listen and hear and ask clarifying questions, but really not engage in a discussion, a full discussion.
So, this is just a listening session tonight? You won't be responding to anything?
We can ask clarifying questions, but that was, that was the purpose of the meeting.
Okay. Could you at least look into answering this question formally?
Yeah, I would add, I would add that I think it's probably, it might vary from board member to board member, there might not be, you know, consensus on that, so it might be something that you would send an email to each board member, or you could get an answer from each of us on that.
Okay, that's fair. Can I have the commitment that you respond to the email?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah, honey, I'm happy to respond.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
And I want to put you to this thing. What, last name was Villanilla? Teskris or something like that. T-E-S-T. You hear? And that'd be Elizabeth Charlotte and Jordan Beck.
All right. Elizabeth Charlotte, sixteen oh two, Skyline Drive, Cedarburg. Thank you, school board members, for having this listening session tonight. Should the future meeting agendas limit public comment to voting items only, I'd encourage you to have these listening sessions quarterly. Parents, students, and community members have traditionally been able to freely bring concerns and compliments to the board during public comments, and I support that tradition of open dialogue. Thank you again for standing by the common sense COVID policy measures this school year. Hooray for field trips, music concerts, and back to normal athletics. Madison and Milwaukee school districts decided yesterday to switch to virtual learning this week. We parents know that nearly all of our children learn better in person, both academically as well as socially and mentally. Whereas McOne and Grafton have COVID policies where certain classrooms and grades bounce back and forth between require masking and mask choice and varying quarantine policies based on case counts, I'm grateful for the stability and clearness of Cedarburg's common sense policies. Thank you also for deciding not to have onsite COVID testing in our schools, as many other districts have done, and thereby not confusing our schools with medical facilities. Many children experience anxiety around medical tests and grateful to have separate lanes for school and medical clinics. Lastly, I urge the district to continue down the path of pursuing educational excellence for all students. Per the last Wisconsin DPI report card, thirty-seven percent of Cedarburg students are actually not proficient in English language arts, and thirty percent are proficient in math. I imagine that you may hear requests tonight to divert the district's attention to topics outside of core curriculum. Please continue to focus on doing the basics of math, reading, and science exceptionally well, so that all Cedarburg students, regardless of background, are on the path to success. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan Beck. And before you start, I'll just say, Jeremy Braun, you're on deck on one, and Catherine Burrows behind Jordan. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Beck from nine one four five, Sunny Ridge Lane in Cedarburg. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say publicly, and to express my gratitude and appreciation. Very similar to the previous speaker, that you have prioritized keeping classes in person and open this year. The several months in the spring of 2020 of virtual learning were very difficult. I have a daughter who was in kindergarten at the time, and it was very difficult, so I just wanted to, again, say publicly, thank you for prioritizing keeping classes in person.
Jeremy Braun? Catherine Burrows? Devin Krecord, you'd be on deck on number one, and Mary Jo, you would be on deck on number two.
Good evening. Catherine Burrows, W78, N418, Ridge Lane in Cedarburg. I'm here tonight to discuss COVID and the mitigation strategies within our district. The only constant in life is change. Cedarburg School District had said it would pivot its strategy if needed. We're at the point of needing that change. We are at the point of needing masks to be mandatory again, and to perform testing on all students in school. COVID has changed. It is out of control, it is setting new records. The next four to six weeks are quite literally going to be horrendous. This last week, more of my patients have tested positive for COVID than any other time during this entire pandemic. COVID now is so contagious that someone can have a brief and seemingly trivial encounter with someone else who's COVID positive and end up contracting the virus themselves. If we can prevent even some of these infections in our kids, we'll help break the chain of transmission and help get through the pandemic. Symptomatic kids need to be tested for COVID, and if they're negative, they need to wear a mask in school. It is offered to all school districts through the state, and I believe the COVID testing has been available to all districts since the beginning of the year. This is something we need to take advantage of now, today. Knowing that pediatric cases can be mild or even asymptomatic, and children can, of course, spread to others, makes me wonder how many community cases we could have prevented if we had utilized this testing sooner. People have argued that masks aren't necessary because mortality rates amongst kids are low. I'm not aware of the rates being low and risks. With that said, even a mild COVID infection can be shared to others. By protecting our kids, we are protecting ourselves. Each member of the board is duty-bound to make decisions that benefit our kids and our community. You've promised a pivot if the time came. That time is here. Please start performing testing on symptomatic kids in school and make mandatory tests, using masks and torches.
Thank you. Devin?
My name is Devin Krecord, one zero two four four, Flagstone Drive, town Cedarburg. First off, thank you all for being here, everybody including the board, as well as everybody else. By attending, you show that you all care about our children's education and the future of this community. Thank you to the board for allowing this opportunity for the people to be heard. In the past several years, we have been shown loudly that the voices of hate and fear are the loudest of all. We must make our voices of love and compassion louder than that of fear and aggression. Fear comes from a lack of understanding. Fear is the mind killer. It leads to anger, which leads to hate, which also leads to suffering. Those that suffer in silence, whose voices cannot be heard, must be allowed the chance to speak, to be loud, to be proud. Those with differences we may not understand, regardless of gender, sexual preference, or orientation, no matter the race, ethnicity, culture, or creed. No matter how hard we try to be kind, loving, worthy role models at home or in school, can never come bad, let alone prevent the amount of hate and vitriol these suppressed people suffer in online communities. Let our homes be sanctuaries of love and understanding. Let our schools be beacons of hope and truth, and let our community embrace those diverse differences with open arms to everyone. I'm proud to have been raised in this community, and after twenty years of living in urban areas such as Chicago, Los Angeles, Seattle, and much of Milwaukee, I'm equally proud to find my way back here again. Thank you all for helping keep this community an amazing place to raise a family, and having the best public schools to educate our children. God bless, and I hope you all had a great holiday.
Thank you. Mary Jo?
Cam.
Mary Jo, Cam, N78W8220, Topview Court. Tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of the staff. Why am I standing here and they are not? As a former CSD employee, I have firsthand knowledge of what the staff is going through. Teachers and staff feel like they can't speak up without being reprimanded or downgraded in the evaluation process, which does affect and impact their salary. Teacher compensation continues to be the number one reason CSD is losing our top teachers. There is no incentive for individuals to stay in this district. What is your compensation plan now that Todd's three-year plan is up? Do you plan on restarting it? Getting rid of it, developing a new one? You need to come up with something so that we can hold on to these teachers. Teachers also need to know what the plan is, so that they are not left in lurk, wondering what is going on from year to year. We need these excellent teachers to help continue our excellence that was mentioned earlier tonight. Many wonder why we can't find people to fill the positions at the high school and the special aid positions. We need to reinstate sick days for our special ed support staff, because they currently get none. Our support staff is the central piece to our puzzle in education. We need them, our students need them. They need benefits, they need sick days. It is necessary to keep these people, and hopefully, if we are able to find a solution, we can offer a better package, so that these open positions can be filled. Sub shortage is a problem. It's a problem everywhere, and it needs to be something that Cedarburg wants to look into as far as how we can make our teachers and our staff feel that they are supported when they are sick and out of the building. Whether this is raising sub pay or figuring out how to use current staff to help with that is necessary. Also hoping that staff and parents are part of the search for a new superintendent position. These groups have an important role in that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's do the list of pre-signups. Are there others that are here that wish to speak that didn't have to sign up? Anyone else, like somebody else on the phone? If you go to mic two, Kate, if you want to go to mic one, please, here, and you're right.
Kate Erickson, West sixteen North, nine eighty-two, Glenwood Drive. What makes tonight different? I really would like to see open public comment at every school board meeting monthly. Better use of time tonight would have been an open agenda session versus an open listening session. Many of us have tried for years or several years to have quite a few issues placed on monthly school board meeting agendas to no avail. It would be nice if open public comment were to be reinstated at every monthly meeting, and that special sessions like this be held quarterly for agenda items that might take up too much time at a monthly meeting. I'd also like to add that I believe public comment at committee meetings would be something worthwhile. I've tried to attend as many committee meetings as I could. One of the most recent was the buildings and grounds. When I see on the agenda the line item for $34,000 for a display cabinet, that's a pretty big purchase. If public comment was available, I could have made the comment that, well, we've spent a lot of money on our wood shop, let's let our students have something to be proud of and make that cabinet themselves. So, in the future, if we could have open agenda sessions, I think the community might be more appeased to have their thoughts actually heard versus just being listened to again with no guarantee of any action. Thank you.
Aaron Schmidt, sixteen eighty, Swallow Drive. Just want to thank you for the nice welcome, the shorter speaking times, the threat of legal action, makes us feel like we're real good at speaking our minds here. So, what does it mean when I can't get a response to simple questions via email, but if somebody posts in a right-wing Facebook group, they get an immediate response from the school board president? I'm sure non-practice attorneys would recommend that myself, and all other physicians. Never treat any patients in a perfect legal world, but we still have to do our jobs, and you should do yours. That means engaging with your community, not just those you agree with, don't live your life just at the advice of attorneys. In regards to your rule enforcement, it seems to be kind of sporadic and inconsistent based on views of the person you're enforcing against. You have a habit of cutting people off who speak on agenda items if they disagree with you, but at a recent treasury meeting, most of the speakers that came up thanked you for your COVID mitigation, lack of measures, which I don't think really has much to do with the budget. And then regarding artwork, I see multiple Facebook posts from the district showing teacher and student artwork being hung up on the walls in various schools. I'm sure they had your approval and went through the proper process, like the student acceptance team, which had that beautiful mural which you painted over. And COVID may not scare you, but that doesn't make you brave, it means you're inconsiderate of others. Hospitals are officially overwhelmed, and it is directly due to an overflow of COVID patients, not just to staffing shortages. The cases doubled in the county over this past weekend. Aurora has taken out full-page ads in the Journal Sentinel, the Chicago Tribune, they were on the news tonight, begging for people to take this more seriously. Currently in our county, the ER wait time is eight-plus hours. That's just to be seen. Twenty-plus hours to go from the ER to a hospital bed if one can become available. I took care of multiple patients for surgery over the weekend, who I picked up in the ambulance bay, because they couldn't even get in the ER bed. Aurora is currently canceling all elective surgeries. Anything not related to cancer emergencies is being postponed. Staff in short. Staff in short, please.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak that did not sign up?
My name is Rachel LaRoya, W seven two, N four four four, Flagstone Drive. I didn't intend on speaking tonight, but feel compelled. I've been to the last couple of school board meetings, but admittedly, haven't gone to many over the years. My kids are in high school, so that's on me. But what I have noticed of the ones that I've attended is there's a really adversarial relationship going on between the school board and parents, and I think that's something that is worrisome, and I think most parents would agree. I think having some open time for parents to express concerns is really important, and, you know, cutting people off and, you know, reminding them to stick to the agenda just creates the wrong environment and the wrong relationship. So, I would encourage you to really think that through again. The other thing I'd like to speak on is the Love is Universal mural. So, I'm not sure if you know, but I own Cedarburg Threads, which is the business that was promoting the T-shirts and selling the T-shirts. And I was really, really proud to be able to do that, because I think you guys handled that really poorly. And I'm not sure if it was administration, or if it was school board, or who it was, but however it happened, it really, really did damage to those children. And I was really happy to be able to show those kids, through all the support, with all the orders that came in from across the country, that they are supported and they are appreciated for who they are. And I really hope you would think again about ways that you could support these children, allowing them some way to create something that would express what their club stands for, and that is just simply love and acceptance of all people. It doesn't have to be anything deeper than that. So, I would really encourage you to think about that and think about ways that you could reach out to them, because as I understand it, you hadn't. You told them that you would, and you didn't. So, I would encourage you to stick to your word and do something that would make a big impact on these children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Can anyone else? If there are no other hands, take a motion to adjourn. One last chance, anyone?
Second?
If the motion is stuck, you adjourn, I'll vote for it.
I'm opposed.
Asking out, thank you for coming.